Good evening. To the zoning board of appeals meeting, it's seven o'clock on September 20th. First want to state what we're here for. Fred and Roseweitha Burwick and Carl and Andrew Burwick, co-owners of 194 Lower Road, Deerfield, Mass. These applicants are requesting consideration for a special use permit for a 2,706 square foot, four bedroom, four-room bed and breakfast at 194 Lower Road, to be owner occupied and in compliance with all building, health, and fire codes. So I guess at this time, anybody has any presentations or comments to make about the hearing? The board would like to hear them. Yes, sir? Do you identify yourself?
I'm George Burwick. So, yes.
Yes, if you come to the table.
Yeah, have a seat. Need your fingerprints.
Would you state your name again, please?
My name is George Burwick, or Carl George Burwick is unlisted on the application. I go by George. I'm one of the co-owners, I guess, of 194 Lower Road. My parents brought the property in an effort to, would like to move closer to us. That was the primary goal. Now, in their probably third stage of retirement, they keep retiring and keep doing more things. So they're basically both retired professors. I'm sorry they couldn't be here, they're on a trip to Germany right now. They do research and, and basically lectures and are currently doing final work on some books. And then they wanted to send their best and say, "Sorry, they weren't here." So the property of 194 Lower presents my parents with an opportunity to live less than 10 minutes from us. That was the primary goal, and also close to the academic resources of the area. And then they wanted to set up an Airbnb initially in the house. And I, my wife and I own a B&amp;B down in Hatfield, and we discouraged against them doing the Airbnb route because we wanted them to be kind of above board, have the proper permits, fire code, health inspections, everything that was required to run a B&amp;B. Because their intention was to run more than one room upstairs, because the upstairs has four bedrooms and with bath. The downstairs is fitted for kitchen and bathroom. So their intention is to basically occupy the lower level of the house and then operate the four rooms as a bed and breakfast. On our end, our expertise is just as guidance. We operate our bed and breakfast, but we're there just to kind of help them out with certain things. They'll be running the operation, we're there to, if they have questions or need cook assistance because they are older, they mainly just want to enjoy the guests as they've enjoyed staying with us and doing the same thing. And so, I guess that's kind of the long and short of it. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer specifically to that.
Carl, how long have you and your wife had your bed and breakfast?
We've owned about five years now.
Do you have any diagrams, prints of the house?
With me, no. I didn't know that we were to bring some, but I could print some.
Those four rooms, how are you, how is the house set for parking?
There are, there's two, there's a two-car garage below. Two cars can fit in front of the two-car garage, so the owner could park in the garage, and two cars, guests' parking could sit in front. There's a spot to the, to the left of the garage, and then there's another spot on the right where you kind of pull up against the house. Since the road is longer, there's also opportunity to put maybe one or two spots along the driveway coming in, kind of like pull-out parking. So I believe there's enough area to kind of...
That's why it kind of helped to have a diagram of the layout and all, to be able to assess parking availability and that kind of thing.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. I may be confused or missed something here, but you're operating a bed and breakfast in Hatfield where you live, and you're going to operate this one? You are or aren't a resident of 194?
I am a co-owner of 194. My parents are the residents.
Okay.
And they'll be operating it as a bed and breakfast. We're mainly helping them out with their, this project for them. So I don't know if there's, how I can answer that.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, would we feel more comfortable hearing directly from the owners? I don't, I seem a little bit...
Yeah, I agree. So you're, you're co-owner?
Yeah.
Of the business or the property?
Of the property.
I have a question. Has this been inspected by a fire chief?
No, it has not. We haven't, we wanted to get, find out if we are eligible for a permit and then to see what needed to be done next. We went, talked to the building inspector as per the application process, and then we didn't, there were no other further steps outlined on the application.
How many, I'm not clear how many people you plan on putting in there?
It's four bedrooms, so the ideal would be eight guests, and then my parents would live below.
If you look at our zoning bylaws, 224, 2243, you're only allowed a total of six...
Six guests.
Not six guests, six people.
Okay, six people.
And I'm not clear, Mr. Decker, you probably know more about it than I do, but it says two occupants plus a household, so if you have three people in the household, you're only still allowed two guests, only two, total two guests. I'm not sure on that.
My law goes way back, a long way, you know, was set up basically to keep people from packing the students in, in fact, years ago. And I think it's, one of the exceptions is that they're related by blood or marriage.
Correct.
And, you know, it's a couple's number, but I have a couple of questions. Now, you're Carl George, and Andrew is your wife?
That's correct.
Okay. And Fred and Roseweith are your parents?
Correct.
So, but you want, what the application is to have four units, four bedrooms to rent out?
Correct.
And, and this is going to be owner occupied. So you're either going to be there supervising when those rooms are rented, or your parents are going to be there?
My parents will be, and in their absence, we would be.
But I mean, you just can't walk away from them and let somebody else do it. Now, downstairs, does it have a bedroom on the first floor?
It has a, basically an open planned basement right now, our lower level. It's partially finished, there is an area for an additional bath, and it was stubbed out initially for a kitchen. So the desire was to set that up as an apartment area for them.
So the lower level would be like another apartment?
Yeah, that was the intention.
Is there an exterior door out of the basement?
Correct, there's two. There's actually more than two, because there's, you have two egress going out the backside of the house, and then there's, actually currently there's three doors going out into the garage. So a total of five doors down below.
I'm not really familiar where your house is, other than it's on Lower Road in West Deerfield. Can you tell me what it's close to?
It's, would be close to the, I can't remember the farmer's name now. Savage has a larger plot of land right around the corner from us, where we own the tip, this property owns the tip of that property. I assume that, yeah, there would be a map of our property in the application.
Were you talking about the, you're talking about the dorsal firm?
Yeah.
And where John Savage Senior used to live?
Yes.
Which side of the road he was?
Across the road from that home down, off closer to Greenfield.
Okay.
Right by the Oxbow.
But it's closer to Greenfield, I just don't know where it is.
What kind of signage will you be using? Or would you be using?
We would be, hopefully just using a sign basically the size that's recommended by the town, so nothing more than, I think it's 430 inch square.
So you're going to have a separate kitchen for your parents and a small bedroom on the lower level of the house?
Yeah.
And then on the first floor, are there living room, dining room, kitchen?
There's a living, dining room, kitchen, and then we're going to block off the kitchen so that it's not used by guests.
What you're also asking, basically in addition to bed and breakfast, is you're actually putting in another kitchen, and you're actually putting in a second unit. The way I understand it, am I understanding it wrong?
No, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, someone asked a question, the fire chief did return information here, if we all saw that, or if you'd like me to pass it back, his concerns.
Yeah, I did not see that.
Would you like me to read it aloud?
Sure, that would be great.
Was this at the, at the table when you sat down?
This is at the table, yes, I did. This is from Chief Darren Melnick. He responded to the request to comments here. His comments included, "He needs a list of four or five rooms used, not including the bathroom." Said, "No more than five rooms." Three was smoke and CO alarm inspection done by the fire inspector, to make sure they're up to code." That was his comments.
Is there anything from the building inspector there?
Ah, the building inspector comments, yes.
It was okay.
It wasn't, okay.
Building inspector comments, Kyle J. Scott, June 28th. I have no objection to this, moving forward, type special permit for bed and breakfast. Planning board says no concerns. None from the board of assessors either, is pretty much all that's in here. Here's some mapping and some pictures of the house. Mr. Decker, if you're concerned about this, I can send that file down.
Nice looking house.
We need some more time to look through this stuff.
Was there any other correspondence around?
This, I went through his other similar type issues, other bed and breakfast permits. The only thing that I noted in here that, on the one that was granted, was it was granted to the, to the person, not to the property, so it's non-transferable.
Right.
That's our understanding as well.
But it has to be written that way. If we let it go, we have to stipulate in this meeting that it stays with the owner. When the owner sells a property, it has to be dropped, or it can stay with the property, which means the next person comes in there and can put the bed and breakfasts in, and we have no say. Mike Rec, Mr. Decker?
Yes, we attended a lecture last year on it.
So not transferable, basically.
That if you, if you don't, if it's not restricted, they could build a 100-room motel.
As long as it's not a dollar store.
I don't care about, you know, I can't come...
Third rail. Go to the third rail.
You got a lot of other people here, Frank, why don't you...
Yeah, while we're looking through all this information, are there any neighbors or butters that would like to comment, any other concerns from anybody? Yes, ma'am? If you could come up to the table, I think it would be easier. Thank you, thank you.
My name is Rita Detwiler. My husband and I live at 200 Lower Road, and the driveway abouts the side of our property, so it's a long driveway. We're not opposed to the idea of the bed and breakfast, but I did want to raise some concerns. I think in listening to the presentation, one would be the parking, and that the parking not be allowed to be along the driveway. The field that is, before you get to the home, is actually not, I shouldn't say that there was proof, but at the time that the house was built, the house had to be sited not on that field, because there were reports from other neighbors that historical remains of ancient burials had been there. So that's why the building couldn't be on that property, it had to be over the hill on fill. So I think anything that affects that field really has to be considered. I think anything that would be certainly digging in the dirt or even parking on that, I think would be a problem. The driveway itself can be a problem. I believe that the strip of land is about 25 feet, and the way the driveway is situated is very close to our property line. In some places, it's like two feet, in some places, it's a little bit more like five feet from our property line, and it's actually quite close to a culvert. A culvert comes from across the street, and then the driveway comes across and is quite close to the culvert. So snow has been a problem, and I'm sure we could work this out with the neighbors, but the previous neighbors, it was a problem, and it, the snow kept coming up onto our property and broke our fence several times. From our side, we probably need to remove some branches, again, so it doesn't hang over their driveway. But I don't know if it's possible, if there's a change in usage for that driveway, to either expand it on one side, so it isn't just so close to our property line. But I think parking along the driveway would be a problem for us. I think another issue is the septic tank. I don't know if that has been looked at, but I think if you're moving from a family use of a septic to a more use from, you know, many more people, it was my understanding, and again, I wasn't, I'm not privy to what are the rules, but it is quite close to a lot of wetlands. So I'd like to be sure that the conservation commission has looked at that and determined that the septic is the proper distance from the water, because something that was, I think at one point considered a seasonal water, is really not seasonal, it's really there the whole time. It's, there's the river, and then there's this pond, almost like, that is closer to the property than the river. So I think that's a consideration. And I think finally, at one point, I don't know if there's a barrier that has to be maintained from the river, where you can't disturb vegetation, but that certainly hasn't been maintained. So it was that way before the house was built, but since then, there's been mowing and cutting and things like that. So I think that would be a consideration also, just for the beauty of the property. I mean, it is right along the river, it has a lot of river frontage. But those are our concerns, but other than that, you know, we hope to be good neighbors, and it is a beautiful site. I think if it is owner occupied, if that is expected, and if the elderly couple is away, that the expectation is that someone would be staying in the house, and not just coming and being that sure if somebody's there and then leaving, because there can be a lot of problems with people. And I want to be sure somebody's managing them, because we're the ones who would be closest to them. And any lights, you know, would also affect us. I don't know if they're, I'm sure you can't ask people to turn their lights off at night, but sometimes lights have been left on all night long, and that is a little hard, because, you know, we enjoy the darkness and the stars. Any questions for me? Oh, actually, I do have one question too, about the, the fire chief. I want to, I don't know if there's, have they determined that emergency vehicles can access that house, because it is set way back? And when the house was built, there was a telephone pole that was over at our neighbor's house, but since then, that telephone pole has been moved. And I don't know if large, like something like a fire truck could actually make the turn and not get into the culvert and pass the, pass the telephone pole. And again, I think the sighting of the sign would be an issue, it couldn't come closer on our side, because the driveway is already almost up on our property line. But those are questions I have, but again, I just ask them for your consideration.
With vehicles parked on the side of the driveway, fire truck getting down there would be difficult.
Yes, and they'd have to park on what really is, you know, a burial ground. Because, again, it had been reported that there were three skulls that had been found when the house was originally being built, that was brought forward to the zoning board.
Was there originally a zoning permit on it?
It was actually a very odd time when that came through. There was a period of time, 11 years ago, when I don't think you had a building person here, and it was developed by Mark, I forget his name, he's also doing the project over here by Sugarloaf, you know who I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know, who you're talking about. It's a whole folder, green folder over there, it's got the original building permits, et cetera, in it.
That's right.
In front of Bernie.
Right. He originally got the permit from Greenfield.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, he got the permit from Greenfield for...
I don't need it, but I'm saying the information she's talking about is in there, because I know the septic design is in there.
The septic design was a concern, but this was originally granted for a driveway and, I think, a basement, but it came through Greenfield, because it was, I don't know the history, but there was a period of time when you didn't have somebody here, like a two-week period, and it came through Greenfield into Deerfield that way. And as a matter of fact, we weren't even informed about it. We kind of found out about it when there started to be activity on the property, and I had to come down and figure out, you know, was there a public given here or something? But, as I say, we hope to be good neighbors, but I just want to be sure that some of the concerns are addressed. I think especially the septic is a legitimate concern, if you're increasing the amount of usage. And as I say, certainly respect for the field, and not to allow parking along that, that would be important too.
You are licensed, well, you have building license? Yes, somehow?
Contractor?
Yeah. Well, septic, when they figure it in, does it figure it in for the number of rooms for the septic?
Bedrooms, closed by bedrooms.
Number of bedrooms?
Yeah.
Again, I think it's important to see if the, where those wetlands really are relative to the home.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to comment, or have any questions?
So I'm Rob Detwiler, doing Lower Road. So first let me just say, I have a hearing problem. I have an appointment tomorrow at 8:30 to get the hearing set, but I haven't heard much of what's going on tonight. So I'll just put that out front. So for repeating stuff, excuse me. So we and I have talked, and we like the idea of a bed and breakfast, we've thought about it ourselves, and that house lends itself beautifully to that sort of function, because it's got beautiful views, it's like multiple levels, it's ideal in some ways. But to me, a bed and breakfast means there's somebody who lives there and rents out some of their rooms in their house to other people. And I've been to, we have two new neighbors, these folks and the folks that were in the Stankhaus, who's two over. And I've heard folks at this location, but I've never met anybody, I've gone down there several times, and nobody's ever there, so I'm not sure what that's about. Could be timing, I don't know. So, but what it means to me is, and I'm hearing tonight a little bit, is that the folks that are going to be the owner residents, the resident owners, don't live there right now, maybe they will at some point. So I understand if they live in California. My question is, what percentage of the time will the owner residents actually be residents in this house that they're going to rent out to other people? Is it really a bed and breakfast, or is this a business scheme? And I have no trouble, because I have neighbors that I know, we can talk to, we see each other over the fence and so forth, and they're renting out space, but I haven't seen that yet. And that gives me pause and concern. I think there were other issues Rita already covered for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Should we ask Carl to respond to that?
Sure.
Carl, can you address that about, are your parents kind of in transit? Are they going to be traveling a lot, or are they relocating here from California?
They're in the process of relocating. My, my mother actually lived, when we took over the house on August 10th, she was, stayed at the house up until the time that she had to go to Germany. So she left from the house to go on her trip, so that's why she hasn't been there. But she was there for the first, I think, week, two weeks that we had taken occupancy, or she took occupancy. And basically, they'll be, they're still very active, so they're in and out quite, I don't want to say quite a bit, but they're definitely still traveling. On the times that they're away, I mean, obviously, there would be somebody at the house, and I think they're, the overall, they only want people staying there, I think, on the weekends, so like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or some, you know, not 24/7, seven days a week kind of thing. It's meant mainly for the weekends for them. And so they're, they're in the process of moving things here. They're closing down, they had another, my mother is closing down some houses in Germany. She has a, her aunt passed away a few years ago, and so they're, she's German, and so she's basically kind of reducing family property that she has in Germany. And is basically bringing things, shipping containers can be, she's putting together items that she'll be bringing to, to the house. So that's going to be in the next, I think, two weeks.
Okay, so will this be their primary residence, or are they going to be splitting their time between California and here?
They're going to be, it's going to be still kind of a secondary residence, but they're going to homestead from the house, and then, but they also still have a house in Germany that they visit, not continue, I mean, it's just throughout the year, it's kind of spotty.
Estimate in what percentage of time they'll be here versus Germany, and so are they out of California now, or?
Ah, no, they still live in Calif, they still have their California house, but that's, right now, they're transitioning out of that house. They're basically trying to reduce their size, and their, their goal was to move towards us. So, and in the effort to do that, they also wanted to be close to us by living in Deerfield.
Okay, so how much time, if they're, so presumably they're still going to travel...
A percentage of time, I would say their travel time is probably, I would still say it's pretty active, it's like between, probably about 25%, so they'd probably be around 75% of the time.
That they'd be here?
Yeah.
Okay, and if they weren't here, then you and/or your wife would be here?
Yeah.
Presumably if you have a business there, you might be splitting up and wanting to be here when you're there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, you can come up.
Hi, I'm Luanne Simmons, 202 Lower Road. Just to expand a little bit on the, what Rita mentioned about the Indian burial grounds located on that site. A concern that, let's say the bed and breakfast is allowed to happen, and folks stay there and all that, that's wonderful. Even if there isn't going to be any more building or disturbing of that property or anything like that, that's great, but the people that are staying there should be aware of this area too. They should somehow, there should be something in place where the guests are told that you don't go over there, you don't... don't go over there, you don't, you know, you're not running around playing baseball, or horseshoes, or, I mean, truly, it's an area that should be just left as is, pristine, and, because it's very inviting. I mean, I've been down there, it's beautiful. This is all a beautiful place. But that area that is undisturbed is very inviting. It's just basically grass right now, and it's undisturbed. So, it looks like a great place to set up a chair, or a badminton net, or something like that. So, anyway, I just wanted to expand a little bit on that, that whoever is on that property should be aware what that area is, and really respect it.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the plot we're talking about, but is this mowed land now, or is it just?
That, I'm not a hundred percent sure about what they, what was allowed and what wasn't. When I was last down there, it was in August, just before the sale went on, and the sale transferred, and the grass was quite tall. It was probably a foot or more tall. It looked more like a, something that maybe gets, I don't even know if it gets mowed once a year, maybe it does.
It's like a hayfield kind of thing, instead of a lawn?
Yeah, it's not, it wasn't a manicured, it's not a manicured lawn. It's left more natural.
Right.
I don't know if they're allowed to cut it once or twice a year. When I saw it, it was about a foot tall. But it's a nice, flat, pretty, pretty spot, that, you know, would be great to set up just about anything, but.
Right.
Anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other concern?
Sorry, real quick, to answer the Indian burial ground question. According to the loan docs that we received, the land does carry with it a limited protection to itself. It supposedly, I have not found it, there's a, some sort of plaque commemorating the area. The stipulation in the, in the limited use of that area is that one is not supposed to dig two feet down beyond that. I have no intention of digging, but just so that it's clear, it does state in that limited use that that's there. So mowing is, according to what we got from the previous owners, is not an issue, it has been cleared a couple of times. There were wildflowers growing or planted there at one point, which were, right now, we mowed down just to kind of clear out for the winter, so that we could reseed. So the intention is basically to keep it as a natural landscape area, not to put anything on it. But the stipulation in the limited use does not stipulate really anything, it just has no digging or building of structures.
Right, so no foundations, or anything like that?
No foundations, yeah.
Right. Okay, question.
Thank you. Sir, so you closed on this property on August tenth?
Yes.
And you filed for this permit prior to closing?
We were curious about, wondering, we were wondering, basically, we looked at the property with the intention of doing something.
So this is like an investment property for you, then?
For myself, not, I'm only part of it because of my, of, basically, my parents are older, and it's just an inheritance issue, so, but my parents are the ones that are basically purchased it, and.
So you're not an owner? I'm still confused. Do you own the property, or not?
I own part of the property.
So, are you on the deed?
I've contributed, I, what's it, yes, I am.
Are you on the deed? Okay.
Yeah. So for all intents and purposes, yes, I am a co-owner, I am part-owner in it. We did provide funding or down payment for the property, and the intention when we were looking for this property was that it could hopefully be something that could be like a money-earning, mortgage-covering kind of business.
Okay. How many feet's the driveway?
Across from the, from the road?
Length from the road, sir?
From the road?
Yeah.
I believe, I don't have the measurement in front of me right now, but I believe it's probably close to a hundred feet, I'm guessing.
I'm guessing it's probably at least twice that.
Yeah.
Length of the driveway's got to be at least two-hundred-and-fifty, if not more, feet.
Six-hundred.
Yeah. I don't, I think I mowed that property for Mr. Einstein about twenty years ago.
And I will say, I'm sorry, I just want to say when any truck comes in, like, the ramp or climbing a truck, or a safety truck, they have to back down the driveway, because once they're down there, they can't turn around a truck that size, so that's what I was curious about. Fire trucks.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a concern, you know, on fire, ambulance, if you have eight guests, you know, on top of two elderly people that are retirement age, you know, you get four cars down there, plus the owner's cars, you need to get an ambulance down there, you know, I think that that's a concern.
I'd have to feel it to consideration.
And it's a, it's a one-way driveway, right? So you can't have.
Ma'am, I think, I think we're supposed to ask people to come up to the microphone if they're going to speak.
Janice Hollibur, I'm at one-ninety-one Lower Road, right, right across from the driveway. And it just, it's just, I just wanted to note that you can't have a car going in and coming out at the same time. So, that could be interesting. But as far as having a bed and breakfast there or something, I have no objections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Hi there.
Hi there.
David Goff, two-oh-one Lower Road. I guess, not opposed to a bed and breakfast. I do have a question, is, does a permit allow any other business use? I'm thinking river recreation, once you do a permit that opens it the business, can you expand on that? Is it, or is it limited to just a bed and breakfast? It's a, it's a, obviously tubing is a big, you know, thing for the Deerfield River, and it is hard to have access, so I'm just wondering about, you know, future opportunities. It's a perfect river access, and I'm probably giving people ideas here, but.
Usually, yeah.
But I'm just wondering, you know, what limits do you, you know, does a business use permit allow, and where does it?
It's not res, it's not business, it's residential, residential agriculture.
Okay.
Which limits it, which means it can only be used for, and here's a stipulation on commercial, it's a bed and breakfast for the agricultural residential, has to be a special permit, and it's only limited to what it's limited for.
Okay.
So you couldn't put a boating ramp out there, or any of that stuff, as far as I understand.
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, any other concerns you want to bring forward, or?
No.
Okay.
I've stated it.
Okay. I guess we'll need a few minutes to talk about what we've heard, and.
All right. I think your thoughts about having Fred and Roswita here would make me feel better, as well as seeing some to-scale drawings for the parking, that seems like it's kind of an issue. Does the septic, if it's by bedroom, and these were all originally bedrooms, that should cover it, right?
They're adding the apartment.
They're adding another bedroom, another apartment.
They're adding another, another bedroom?
I mean.
Rich?
That's not our apartment.
On the septic, when the, is it, its size, when the building?
You'd have to see what their septic is sized for, or.
It's like a four-bedroom, I looked through it.
Okay.
But that would be taken up by the whole apartment, right?
Right. And the building is back there, so, I can't see, so.
I don't know, was that clear, was that clear in the application, that they were going to add a bedroom to make a downstairs apartment? Because I didn't see that in their application for the special permit. But he did testify to the fact that they were going to add a bedroom downstairs in the basement.
Is that correct?
Right now, there's four bedrooms upstairs, and so my parents intend to use the bedrooms upstairs, but they would like to finish the downstairs as an apartment for themselves.
With a bedroom?
With a bedroom, yes.
That's an additional unit, and the, I'm not sure what the frontage requirements are there. There's not much frontage, is there?
There's frontage all along, there's the, there's another part of, another parcel attached to that property that makes up the frontage. So the road is just a small portion of it. There's the two houses that are next door, and then there's frontage that goes down.
There's a usable frontage that you can actually access the.
Yeah, there's, there, that is not there, but there's just the curve in the road that's the frontage that continues down.
I have to plead some ignorance here about bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast with a second kitchen, is that what you're saying? Your parents are going to have a kitchen of their own downstairs for their own apartment, and then there's going to be one for the four bedrooms?
Yes, they would like to have, like, a small.
That sounds like an apartment to me, not a, not a bed and breakfast.
The downstairs?
Either one, you can't, that's, I believe, Mr. Decker, that is illegal to have a apartment in a single-family dwelling, because you had, we had one taken out in town already.
Oh, okay.
Right, so that would be like making it a two-family in the agricultural district, that would have to be in the downtown district to have a bed and two-family.
So if you're just, if they finished the basement, though, with an extra bathroom, and used the kitchen upstairs?
The kitchen would be the issue.
Yeah. So if one just had a bathroom downstairs, and for, just another room for them, so they'd be a little bit separate, but they could use the kitchen upstairs, that wouldn't be an issue.
But if there's a bedroom, that's an additional bedroom, and the septic is only, only has four. That's what the house is sized for, correct, Rich?
If the documents are here, you can take a look. There's also some correspondence with conservation, and so.
I'd be interested to know, know that, because there is, the downstairs does have, it's all plumbed out for another toilet and another shower.
The issue's not the.
Not the toilet, not that, but the septic.
Both by bedrooms.
Right, by bedrooms. And if one left it, let's say, as a four-bedroom, and just had the downstairs as a, as a finished area, could one do that? Or didn't use four bedrooms upstairs, and just left it as a three-bedroom upstairs, and didn't use one of the bedrooms?
The kitchens are controlling.
Four-bedroom dwelling. Four-bedroom dwelling, yeah, it's clear on the septic, so. Four-bedroom septic design, so you technically couldn't, without modifying the septic, you couldn't add the bedroom.
Okay.
Are you really tied into having four rooms that you can rent out?
It was just a, in our, I guess, in our initial vision, yes, I'm not tied to it. If I, if we're not allowed to have four, and we're limited to three, that would be fine as well.
All right, another question. Why four bedrooms?
The four bedrooms upstairs are, each have their own bedroom and attached bath, and so that was what was attractive to the house to begin with, because you wouldn't have to make any modifications. Some bed and breakfast that we've looked at, they add on the bathrooms as a second piece to the whole house, and so it becomes a little bit more complicated with plumbing and just house design. And so, like, I've entered houses where the bathroom, you have to go through a hallway, and then go through the bathroom, and then go through the, into the owner's quarters, and so that was kind of odd. So we were looking for something that was a little bit more accessible, and in this case, the builder decided to make four bedrooms, four baths.
The question I have, I'm going to ask you, because you're the expert on this. On this quote, it says only two occupants. My understanding of this law, it's only two occupants. So if you have four people in there, you can't have more than two, and you can only have two, you can only rent out the two people. No, maybe I'm wrong on that.
Well, I mean, I guess, if the variance conflicts to our bylaw against the boarding house.
That's right.
We wouldn't want to issue a variance that conflicts with that. So I mean, I guess the real question is, how many people are actually living there?
My, my reading of it is only two, no matter what happens.
Right, there's two people living there.
And they're more than a total?
But again.
The guests.
No, they're only allowed two guests. That's it. So why have had four bedrooms for two guests?
Doesn't the bylaw say that Deerfield, there's three, you can have a bed and breakfast up to three rooms?
That's, I'm not sure what I mean.
Because there, you approved Two Rivers, that's over also here in Deerfield just recently, and that has two bedrooms.
Two to six.
Two to six, but it, but it says you have to include the people that live there. So you can have six people. If you have five people that live there, you could only put one person in there. You couldn't put two people in there. That's what's confusing when you, when I read this, because if I read it one way, it says you can have only two, then if you read it another way, it says, but you can have up to six, so if you had one person living there, you could put five people in also. So I'm, that's why I'm asking, I'm confused on what that's, what that means.
So that Two Rivers has three people living there, according to what I understand from the last hearing. And then there's two additional rooms that she lets out. So that would make four, seven?
It's illegal.
So that's in violation?
That's a boarding house. Correct?
But they sell themselves as a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, I don't really know what the enforcement or the inspection is.
And then South Deerfield.
What I know, you know, is, all the events that I have the opportunity to attend is, there's a huge demand for this type of thing.
I, I would interpret it differently.
See, that's what.
I would interpret it differently, I don't think any of these are ours.
It doesn't include them.
That's how I interpret it, but.
Yeah, there's the, Tibetan Inn is another example, they have three rooms, they're down South Deerfield.
I don't know if that's permitted as a bed and breakfast, though.
It was originally a motel.
Motel.
And that's not in a residential.
There was a special permit granted, not from me, I don't know the details at this point.
But they sell themselves as a bed and breakfast.
Well, he did get a special permit, but I'm not from me, I don't know the details right now, but that was probably seven, eight years ago.
See, I was told, that's what it was, I was told what I was said, that's why I was asking, by two people. So I think we have to have that clarified.
Yeah, I read it. I, I mean, I think, I mean, first off, I'm not voting tonight, I was an alternate member, but if I was to vote, I wouldn't be comfortable without meeting the owners of the parents that are going to run this. And I'm not comfortable with the size, because I think, you know, you're going to have the demand to rent out the rooms.
Yeah.
I think the demand's there, there's no question about that, I mean, just, you know, we have a lot of stuff that goes on in Deerfield.
Well, the fact that the septic's designed for four bedrooms, that means your parents or whoever's living there is going to have to occupy one of them, so that only leaves three.
Three.
You'll have to stick with the three, three rooms. And then, you said earlier that your parents or whoever's living there at the time would be parking in the garage, and then everybody would be up against the garage or in front of it, and that, that's a problem for, if you had to get out of the garage, and your guests aren't there, the keys to their car aren't there, or emergency vehicle has to get in, or it's a problem. The parking's the big problem for me. And then, we heard from everybody about parking on the side of the road, the driveway, excuse me, is probably not a good idea. So.
I have some concerns of inadequate access, the driveway's so small, and would the access to the fire trucks, et cetera, especially if you're, if you've got four cars there besides your parents, that's at least five, your parents probably have two cars.
They have one. My father doesn't drive anymore.
Okay, but they have, that's five cars, and, you know, that's significant, and it's not very wide. The other thing is, I have a concern about the wetlands, the barriers and what have you, whether or not if any improvements were done. Snow is a big problem, well, the septic is fine, you know. I'm, I'm basically an alternate member, so I'm going to be like Adam and just give my advice, because we have five duly qualified people who can vote.
Thank you, Mr. Decker.
And I can get out of it. But my point is, it's limited access. If somebody was, I would much more be in favor of it if you wanted to rent one or two bedrooms, and not build a unit out in the basement. And obviously, that'd be restricted to owner occupied, and I mean, owner occupied, the person lives there all year, and doesn't go to Germany and leave somebody else babysit the place for.
Oh, again, that's, we're owners, so.
As long as you're a permanent resident, you could, that would be fine, but if you're not a permanent resident, you know, it's supposed to be owner occupied, if the permit granted, should be restricted to only owner occupied.
Is your house in Hatfield owner occupied with your permit for your bed and breakfast there?
Yes.
So. So, okay. So you, then, you know, that presents an issue. You can't be owner occupied in Hatfield and Deerfield at the same time.
No, I can't. And that's why my owner, my, I'm, that's my residence.
Hatfield? Right, that's my point, sir. Your residence is in Hatfield, so you can't be owner occupying in Deerfield.
Right, but if my parents leave the house and I, that's basically my second residence.
Okay, I, I see where we're at with this.
Anyway, those are my thoughts and we've had several, uh, bed and breakfasts been granted. We've seen people withdraw their applications without prejudice because it didn't look like it was gonna pass. And, you know, it's a, it's a purely discretionary thing on the board if they wanna buy into your program.
Well, with regard to the fire access, we had a report from the fire chief, right? Was there anything listed there that was a concern?
Um, he did list, list the things for the inspection. I, I don't know where, where it went. I didn't read it up, but.
So if access is listed there, I don't know that we should be talking about that. I think I have concerns about.
My, my access issue would be more cause for, for EMS, for the ambulance. I think that it's highly likely that you're gonna have a medical issue far before you're gonna have a fire issue, when you can bring in extra people, you know? Like your chances of having a fire between eight houses, you know, if you pick eight houses, you know, chances of one of the eight having an issue are higher than just one, just like eight people, you know?
Uh, we actually closed this to comments, right?
Yeah.
So, where, I'm sorry, we've already, um, taken comments, so we're actually in discussion, just asking questions of the applicant.
Well, I, I know you said, let's discuss it, but you never officially closed it.
Uh, yeah, we did. Yes, we did.
I'm talking, you said, let's discuss it, but you never, uh, did. I did, it's not a question, I'm just here to use in precedence constantly and what I gather in the Zonian bylaws. You know, and use in precedents that are not in residential agriculture. And that is, that is where the, a lot of this decision lies on. By, by the Zonian bylaws, and I'm not opposed by the merits, I'm opposed to the precedent being set.
I agree though with Mr. Decker about who, who owns this. I mean, you've got co-ownership and I don't, it says own, owner operated bed and breakfast. So if you put six people on there, you've got six people on a deed that could run this bed and breakfast? That's basically what we're saying, correct? They're on the, if they're on the deed, then you could have six people. Am I wrong?
Well, Mr. Sodowsky, I think that's something that the board has to consider. That's not, that's what he's saying. I don't think that we've made a decision.
No, but that's a concern I have, is you've got this open ended, who owns it and who's there and?
Well, my parents are there. That's.
But you said they travel?
Yes, they do travel. I mean, I can't forbid them to travel. I mean, is that, I don't know if that exists in the bylaw that they can't travel, but.
Well, that's, I'll be honest, that's a concern I have. I go along with Mr. Decker that we don't know how long they're gonna be there, who enforces this. They may be gone all year long and it's, it's in there and it doesn't get enforced.
I think, I think that goes back to my concern. We haven't had the opportunity to meet and engage that.
That's right. So those, that's my concern.
Can we continue to, do we have another meeting?
We can continue. We can go to, you can go to a field, field review and actually visit the site and see what you see for yourselves. And what, you can continue.
Do we have a timeframe that we have to do all that?
If the applicant consents to a waiver of the time limits, uh, then it, there wouldn't be a problem. But I think you only have so many days in which to grant the permit once the application has been filed. And I'm not sure if it's sixty days or ninety or what. I wouldn't wanna say for sure. But we would wanna make sure that we got a waiver from all the applicants as to the waiver of the time limit.
To give us time to possibly visit or to have the.
Meet your parents.
Have the parents come in and maybe get a map of par, parking and get just a little bit clearer idea of few of the things with the sewer or the bylaw.
The septic and all.
Wouldn't the parking be predicated on the permit? Like where we wanna put the parking versus where the neighbors feel that the parking should be?
Well, that, the site visit would show what you want. You know, it would also show where your neighbors think it would be best served, okay? And, you know, we can look at a couple of pictures, but you really can't tell that much.
Sure.
Mr. Decker, I have a question for you. Um, does the applicant, do we have to vote on the applicant as presented, as the application as presented for the number of bedrooms? Or do we have the ability to omit?
We have, the board has discretion to approve what you think is in the best interest of the town and treating the applicant fairly. If you think that two would be much more palatable, it could be restricted to two. Some people won't even want one. One of those applications that have been approved had one. One had four. I'm not sure what the other one had. One was withdrawn. But the point is, it's discretionary because it's a special permit.
Right.
So you can put conditions and you can change it and so we have?
You can tailor it.
And then we also have some time to gather more information and?
Yep, but you should set a date to, to continue the hearing and for a field visit. And, uh, and you shouldn't go out too far, a couple of weeks or something like that, so that you can do your deal and make a decision if you don't, if you don't get the waiver. If you get the waiver, you're not gonna be in as much of a rush, okay? Well, like I said, I'm not voting tonight because we have five duly qualified people here to vote.
Would you and your parents be willing to give us a little more time to know what we have to know before we make a decision?
I think so, yeah. I mean, that's very reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, there's obviously some issues that we're concerned about, so I don't know that you'd wanna go to a vote tonight. But it's up to you.
Yeah, no, I think if a site visit is in order, I would, I don't think there's an issue with that at all.
Or better photographs or diagrams or if that's easier.
Yeah, we, we weren't very clear on, on what we were supposed to be presenting. It was, we received the application, the application provided us an outline. We follow the outline, so. But yeah, there's more detailed drawings needed or layouts or architectural drawings. We have those. So we can bring those in or if you, again, depending on how.
Now that the downstairs bathroom is probably not gonna happen, then it would be nice to see what the.
Kitchen.
The kitchen as well. We, we know you can't have two kitchens. And, um, I'm sorry, I misspoke. The downstairs bedroom. The downstairs bedroom cannot happen because of the septic design.
And I think the kitchen makes it a two-family.
Right, so there's no second kitchen and no downstairs bedroom.
Okay.
So if we had an idea what the downstairs was gonna end up being, um, that would be easier for us. And then, of course, the amount of guests in the parking and all are concerned too. So, and I think it's beneficial to everybody, you, the guests and this board having, you know, saying it's okay to do something, so.
Do we need to make a more formal list of what we'd like or do we?
Yeah, why don't we? Why don't we?
That might be better than, are you proposing that in lieu of a site visit as to?
I think that would be, my opinion, it would, personally, it'd be easier if you brought us the information than all of us having to be able to get our schedules in order to go and you be there so that we could look.
You might be thinking too, it will make this list, but when your parents are going to be back in the country and available?
Uh, they'll be back in October, beginning of October, first week.
Because then it'll help, help us to set a date.
Right, so we'll know how long.
And then, I don't know how we officially get this waiver of the timeframe, but we would wanna make sure that we know how to do that, so.
Okay. So for a list, it would be a, um, a layout of the downstairs minus the kitchen and additional bedroom.
That wouldn't be a more concern, as long as there's not any.
No, no, as long as those things are not there, then we don't.
Right, so that will.
Right, right. If you're not changing anything, then we don't, then that does not matter. Parking?
Parking. So maybe the, a better plot plan or?
Yeah. Yeah, a drawing or a sketch of the size of the area in front of the garage where you had mentioned you were gonna ask everybody to park when they're staying there.
What you're basically wrong is a limited site plan.
Limited site plan.
Well, you know, not, not saying it all has to be drawn to scale.
No, no.
But if you've got some sort of a limited site plan as to how you wanna lay this thing out so people can understand.
What else?
Oh, I think we need to run this by the building inspector, who is, I think, David Janson now. But the plumbing is existing because there was a problem on River Road of an apartment and the building inspector made him pull out all the plumbing that was there. So it couldn't be turned back into an apartment at a later time.
So this, I was making a list of things we're gonna give to him, right, what we want in the next meeting?
Mm-hmm. But I would think the building inspector should talk to him, like the new.
The new, okay.
David Janson.
Regarding everything or regarding?
Well, regarding this business with the plumbing, I'm not sure. And that's what I was told happened. I think he needs to take, since we have concerns, I think, you know, that's what we have a building inspector for, is to take a look at this stuff. So let's get him involved. And you can talk with him and see what he says.
Plumbing and septic or?
Well, he would be, well, the Board of Health agent, so I don't know. Maybe you should, uh, Pat, call email, ask for both. That, that office can handle it or, I don't know.
Ask for both?
The input of the Board of Health Inspector, Mr. Kalchewski, and the building inspector.
Cause we, cause I think he was asking that he meet with the building inspector.
Uh, he has to ta, I think he needs to take a look, since we have existing plumbing in there and I, my understanding was that it had to be removed, or the house couldn't be sold.
You got something on your limited site plan as to where the snow is going, where it gets plowed, et cetera? And you should basically get the permit, a conservation commission permit, make sure everything's in compliance with the previous orders of condition. If any.
Could you say that again, conservation permit?
Yeah, previous orders of condition, et cetera.
Is that something they'd already have?
That'd be in that file.
It's in this file here. There's, there's correspondence. If anybody wants to take a look.
So we're trying to get a list together of what we'd like them to bring to the next meeting. Anything else?
Adequate access, wetlands, seasonal, the snow, the septic.
Parking spots, drawing of the property.
Septic driving.
Board of Health, building inspector, all of them, okay.
So pick a date, Frank.
In October, when they'll be back.
All your parents are returning when in October?
Um, I, they told me the first week, so I'll just check the calendar here. I believe it's around the sixth, fifth or sixth.
I need a real calendar to put my hands on.
I gotta wait for this to follow up. Pretty sure I have a meeting on the fourth and one on the ninth.
The eighteenth?
That I know of right now. A limited. Maybe Thursday, the eighteenth?
Thursday, the eighteenth. Is Thursday, the eighteenth, okay with everybody? Is that okay with you, Carl?
Yes.
Thursday, the eighteenth at seven P.M.?
Yep. Thank you.
Here.
Here, yeah.
So we need to make a motion for a continuance to the eighteenth then? Is that what you do?
Yes.
Has a move?
Everybody in favor of a continuance till the eighteenth?
Seconded.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you, doing a good job.
Mr. Decker, now where do we get that clarified about the number of people in the house? I'm confused.
Take some research.
I think there's an argument.
The, well, the truth, the question we had was that the word, the wording of that is kinda ambiguous. It says six and then two. My interpretation was you can only have a total of six. Two can be non, non-residents. That's it. Only two non-family members.
Yeah, well, that's one part of what I'm talking about. Assuming you're reading the chart as far as the allowance of bed and breakfast. Because the chart specifically says if you rent over two people, it becomes a boarding house. Boarding house specifically. Not a lot in the apartment, and what was on TVs, where they're throwing you an example type of, that was a problem. But anyway, what he was citing for, for references were to not, if permits that were issued and are issued. And they're getting, I'm not opposed to anybody starting at the dollars first, but what you do is you open that door, you then you're gonna close it.
Top, is that seven, nine, that River Road one's not R.A.? Levine's?
You don't, you know, these things are still on. Talk to you about it afterwards. I got it right here.
We have another permit that was the seven fifty-four River Road.
So we are still in the meeting?
We're still in the meeting, yeah.
That got a little confusing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know, it was a little confusing.
Let's just, here it is here.
As long as it's, it's on hold.
Yeah, special permit.
That's what we said.
Right there, special permit.
My question is, to the board is we need to find out what it means. What does that mean?
I'm sorry. So was there any other correspondence in that file? Any of the board today?
And can we, I have a lot of basic questions, like can we take these things home and leave them? Are, are we only allowed to look at these things when we're here?
Take them home.
Okay.
Let's make sure you're charged it out if you take it.
To, tell Pat what I, what I take?
Yes.
So we'll leave it here for tonight and we just come to her and say?
Put an out card in the folder and.
Or just look at it in the, in the conference room or whatever.
Or make some copies because things walk away and they need to come back.
Okay, so no, we won't leave with it tonight, but we can come to Pat because I think there might be more answers in here than we realize.
There's a lot of stuff there. You, you'd need five or six hours to go through it.
I did ask.
Give it some direction.
I did ask, uh, if, um, these documents could be scanned and emailed to us prior to the meeting.
That would be excellent.
So I, I was told that that was not past practice, so.
You just can't discuss them.
I, I understand, I understand.
But I feel like it's, it's, we should come equipped with that knowledge.
And I think it would, we would be more efficient.
Absolutely.
In the past, the, the applic, application, in some cases, has been scanned and we've got an email with it.
And we did with this one, but it was one page.
Right.
It was just that, where it was on the map.
Right.
And that's, that wasn't the full information, like, even having five or six pages that were right there, would it been?
Well, I stopped today and had her pull that file.
Which was great, but I.
And I had her pull the others that had been granted, so you could see what has already transpired.
And what would we draw?
Maybe it's just practices moving forward, if we could somehow make that. Something, even if it's not a past practice, if it could be future practice, I don't know who we talked to.
Well, no, yeah, okay, why don't we move along, there might be some people that have some other business. So number three on our agenda is to vote for a new chair and a new clerk of this board. So that's what we need to do.
I think you're doing a great job, but I don't make motions, I'm already in all of them.
I nominate Frank. You've nominated him already.
In the last hour and twelve minutes, I've known Frank, he's never let me down.
My second.
Guess what?
Will you take it?
Yeah, somebody has to do it, and, um, not that I have all kinds of experience doing it, this is only the second time, um.
You're doing good.
Yeah, I'll, um, do my best.
You're very calm.
I'll do my best. Okay, how about a new clerk?
I think you were looking at her.
Yeah.
So you're clearly picking out the only woman. I'm just saying.
You've got good. Look, I can read your writing.
Horrible.
I nominate Kathy, who's our clerk.
My second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, did we get an email? Do we have any mail to review?
So this means I need to re-watch this meeting, because I didn't take notes. That'll be fun.
Just these here, Frank, that's all I see.
It says ZBA correspondence, is that it?
Yeah, it's what you're gonna look at.
That's the new mail?
They should've put my name tag down there, Frank's over here.
Okay, so we have a letter from the architects, Deerfield Planning Board, and ZBA, in regards to the Dollar General store.
Are there multiple copies there?
Yes, there's more than one copy, so rather than read it out loud, why don't we just take a minute to read it over, let's see.
It's gotta go that direction.
Everybody got a copy?
I believe so. I did read this, yeah, I've seen this.
Yeah, I didn't, we read this was in the, or this was in the newspaper.
Okay, well, we can read this and take this home.
Can we take this home?
Yeah, we can take this home.
Now, I received this by email.
Make a note, you took it under advice.
Yes, yes.
Oh, in my notes, that I'm supposed to be taking, okay.
We also have a letter. We have a letter here to the zoning board of appeal, appeals from Dr. Amy Gazin-Schwarz, three B Evans Lane. This is in regards to the proposed Dollar General store on Greenfield Road. Having reviewed the site plans for the proposed Dollar General store and attended three planning board meetings about it, I still have concerns about whether this use is appropriate for the location, concerns about traffic, and concerns about its impact on the neighborhood. I live on Evans Lane, and my neighbors on the other side of Evans Lane are direct abutters of this property. Furthermore, the abutting land is owned by the Mill Village East Condominium Association, on which I am a member. This parcel is the only parcel in a strip of commercially zoned land running either side of Routes five and ten that is surrounded on two sides by residential neighborhoods. The large store proposed for this parcel is out of keeping with the neighborhood. The size of the store requires that the developers get a special permit from the ZBA. The zoning regulations about this permit state five three two zero criteria. Special permits may be granted by the Special Permit Granting Authority upon its written determination that benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood. In view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site, in addition to any criteria set forth in specific provisions of this bylaw, the determination shall include consideration of the, each of the following. And she cites different, um, different, um, numbers. Social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, adequacy of utilities and other public services, neighborhood character and social structures, impacts on the natural environment, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. It is hard for me to see how the benefits of the Dollar General store at this site outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and neighborhood. The products sold at this store are readily available at the three convenience stores located just a couple of miles south on Greenfield Road, the new Cumberland Farms, and the two Circle K stores, as well as the new local Cheslakes Market in South Deerfield, and numerous farm stands, including Atlas, which is just across the street from the proposed site. The stores will not provide significant employment for the town, being usually staffed by five or fewer people. It does not seem to serve any community need well. The detrimental impacts on neighborhood and town may be significant. The Dollar General store at this location, along a main access road to Deerfield, does not fit with the character of any other businesses in the area. It attracts from the rural historical appeal of Deerfield, our main attraction for visitors. The site is located at a busy intersection, which is on this, which is the site of already numerous traffic accidents. The developers make what seem to be contradictory claims about its impact on traffic. On the other hand, they say it will not impact traffic because it is not a destination. People are more likely to stop in when they are passing on their way to somewhere else. However, this would seem to mean that the highest number of stops would be when there is the most traffic, thus affecting the traffic flow on Greenfield Road just when it is busiest, when turning cars close to dangerous intersection in a stretch of road posted at fifty miles per hour could cause most disrupt, disruption and danger. A formal traffic study should have, should certainly be undertaken to determine the, the degree of this impact. The over nine thousand square foot store, apparently about twice the size of the new Cumberland Farms, and its parking and driveway are likely to impact the groundwater in the area by creating significant impermeable cover. In addition, the store will have to install a septic system. The area is already quite wet, particularly where the Butts Mill Village East condominium lands, and I am concerned that any rise in the groundwater levels may have a detrimental impact on the three septic systems and leach fields we have installed on the abutting land. Our systems were designed assuming the groundwater conditions would remain the same. The developer stormwater analysis states, per published USDA NRCS soils maps, the property exclusively contains two twenty-three A soils categorized as silo silt loam, zero to three percent slopes. On-site evaluations and geotechnical evaluations show the parent material soil to be a fine sandy loam and a silt loam. According to a hydrologic soil group of C, was used in the watershed analysis. This information is provided in appendices B and H of this report. It is not very clear why the USDA soil category was not used. Given the sensitivity of the location relative to neighboring septic systems, it is important that an independent, detailed specialist hydrogeological study be conducted that takes into account the impact of development on neighboring septic systems as well as on the property in question, and can discuss whether appropriate standards were used in the stormwater treatment design. Here it is difficult to imagine anything but a detrimental impact on, of the proposed store. It is surrounded by residential neighborhoods on two sides, and traffic, lighting, trash disposal, delivery trucks will all impose on our enjoyment of our homes. Even the relatively low-impact lighting proposed would be significant if it was visible from your bedroom window. Even with the proposed eight-foot fence and tree planting, the sixteen-foot high building will be visible from our houses and from the roadways. Even careful disposal of trash and garbage will attract rodents. Litter is likely to increase on the surrounding roadways. Noise and pollution of delivery trucks will be noticeable. An unattended parking lot at night is a potential hazard. We are concerned about the impact of this particular use at this site on our property values. Since a decrease in property value will also affect real estate tax revenue to the town, the town should also consider this negative economic impact. Development at this site has already impacted the natural environment through cutting of numerous trees along Greenfield Road and the very large stacks of brush which remain on the site from that cutting. Large areas of impervious surfaces, building, roadways, parking, will likely impact the water table levels. Litter, air pollution from delivery trucks, customers' automobiles, noise from air conditioning and ventilation systems will all contribute to negative impacts on the local natural environment. Potential fiscal impact. While this store might contribute some taxes to the town, it is worth considering what cost the town will incur in serving and managing the impacts of the store. Further, a store of this type may negatively affect local businesses that sell similar goods. In order to adequately assess traffic and septic water runoff impacts, detailed specialist studies must be conducted. At a minimum, independent engineering studies of the hydro, hydrogeology and traffic must be undertaken. Studies of the potential economic impact on local businesses, town tax revenue, tourism, and property value should also be considered. Such studies should not rely on previous studies submitted by the applicants or experts suggested by the applicants, but it should be independent. While we recognize these parcels are zoned for commercial use, I believe the many detrimental impacts described in this letter make the, make a Dollar General store an inappropriate development for this location. Sincerely yours, Amy Gazin-Schwarz.
So yes, you place it on file?
Okay.
And is it just addressed to us, or is it addressed to?
It's, it's addressed to the select board, the planning board, and the zoning board of appeals.
We don't have to send them a copy because they already?
No, they already have.
So it'll become part of the file from this meeting?
Or the regular correspondence file.
Right, okay.
We've got some end of month reports. Certainly.
If, if a letter from Mr. Coon was not read into the record, does it just go in the file?
The letter from whom?
Uh, the architect, John Coon, which everyone is going to read separately. Would that have to be introduced at the next meeting so that it goes into the public record?
The one on the table, so it's part of the public record, just to get rid of.
Okay.
But once, once, one something in a meeting gets taken, it's public record.
The one we.
It'll go in the correspondence file as well.
Yeah. But I mean, it is a public record.
Good, yeah, it's just a point of clarification, that's why.
Yeah, the only reason I read this one is I only have one copy.
No, I understand, thank you.
And so you're familiar with, with the letter that you're speaking of?
Yes.
I assume you brought it?
No. Mr. Coon is a very intelligent person, I assume he was quite able to write his own letter.
Okay, end of month reports. August twenty eighteen. These are just ones and expenditures that we could look at afterwards. June, just dollars. Okay, well, these are things I can pass around when, when we're finished. Okay, so then, lastly, does any, anybody else have any other business they wanna bring before the board? No. Seth? Uh, I was asking if there's any other business?
I, I have one, just wanna reiterate. If Frank is the new chair? Could you speak possibly with Pat about that new process of trying to get information in advance?
Sure, I guess I will.
Okay. Just, I mean, not excessive, but just things that would be?
Right.
Super good to have familiarity with before we come here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's always available, but, you know.
It's always available, but I think, yeah.
Which, which means it's available, you mean, like, if it's emailed, or, or we come in and sign out a copy, or is that what you wanted to know, how we get it, or?
I'd love it if it could get sent to us, but if we know that there's, if that's impossible for some reason.
Okay, I can ask her.
Just some.
So it's like, something like that big file, you know?
Yeah.
Well, that is.
Would be available, yeah, so that's obviously, that wouldn't be emailed, but it's available.
But it seemed like there were a few, like the letter from the fire, fire department, or some of the other things might've been.
Sure, yeah, it comes in.
I think all of this stuff was, you, these small folders were pretty useful, that, you know.
So maybe if it's so much, then maybe the process that you come up with with her is just, you know, let us know that there's stuff that we can come check out, or?
Okay, and then I can email everybody, or she can email everybody, that she's got stuff that we can look at, okay.
But we can't email each other.
Between ourselves, right, right. Oh, Bruce?
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure what you were asking.
I wasn't sure what you're looking amongst.
Oh, and actually, one more thing, are you gonna check with Pat too on the waiver?
Yes.
To make sure that we're all in line with the bylaw?
Yes. Yeah. Okay, Bruce.
So my comment was, oh, okay.
We're ready.
Okay, my comment was, I'm assuming you're looking at this bed and breakfast based on this chart? For a special program. Has anybody read twenty-two forty-three that go along with that chart? And if not, I will read it for you, if that's all right, please do so. Okay. Borders and single-family dwelling. The renting of rooms and or furnishing of board to more than two persons in a single-family dwelling by the owner occupant thereof shall be permitted by, shall be a permitted accessory use. The renting of rooms and or furnishing of board to more than two persons, but not more than six, in a single-family dwelling by the owner occupant thereof shall be deemed a boarding house subject to provisions of section twenty-two thirty. Twenty-two thirty is your chart, and twenty-two thirty specifically does not allow boarding houses in a residential agricultural. So, so, you know, going along with, I think it.
It was Bernie.
Bernie had asked why, you know, uh, you know, why you need three or four rooms, so I wasn't sure. It did, it sounded like some of the conversation was a little vague on that, whether twenty-two forty-three had been read, so that, and there again, listen to the presenter, it sounds like he's asking a boarding house to be deemed a bed and breakfast. So, and as I said, I'm not against anybody trying to make the dollar, I think it's great for the economy, but by saying, talking, you don't wanna set precedence, and that's, that's my own comment on that, so.
Yeah, but what if you had just one person in each bedroom?
What's that?
What if you had one person in each bedroom?
If they're, if he's renting, if he's renting to it, and if you add, no, it doesn't say in each bedroom, it says total of two, more than two.
Two to six?
Two, two renters.
I, I read it like four times today.
That twenty-two forty-three?
And gone back, but I think, I mean, we, we have other approved bed and breakfasts. The question is, if they're in, if the seven, the one that was approved, the latest one that we have here is at seven fifty-four River Road, and I know there's a commercial district that goes somewhat past the real yard, but where does it stop? Cause you're saying that it's in agricultural.
Residential agricultural, all right, and that's what you're talking.
Property there, is that?
So, and if, and if that other one got by, then it should never have done.
She's close, I know she's close, so I guess.
Actually, it's, it doesn't say just.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I mean.
Well, they're here for the soul.
Can I make a motion to adjourn so we can shut? Okay?
All right.
Second, all in favor of adjourning?
Yes.